Calling the meeting to order at 6:05. Are you ready?
I'm ready. Let's do it.
All right. Anybody got any adjustments to the agenda? I forgot to put on the agenda that we'd be opening the fuel bids, but that'll be under the treasurer's report.
They weren't sealed. It wasn't a RFP that I sent out for sealed bids.
So the bills and payroll orders, we'll get to those. Minutes from the October 9 meeting. Did you want to look and see? The part that you commented on is... Read in this paragraph here, see if that's a little better.
Yeah. I'm totally happy with that. Thank you.
Senator Robin, thank you.
Thank you.
So, public comment. This is for anything that's not on the agenda. No public comment. All right then, let's just get... Oh, I just, I always want to put this on the agenda and I forget, but I just like to remind people of all the opportunities that are available for our public service. We've got several unfilled positions. We need an animal control officer. We need a select board scribe. We need an auditor. We need a board of adjustment member, a planning commission member, and a town energy coordinator. So, just don't all raise your hands at once. Norm's putting his hands in his pocket. Okay, town clerk report.
For the last couple of weeks, I have been basically checking over the tax bills when they come in, so when they go to bring, they're all ready to be deposited, so she can do her deposit, let's put it that way.
What?
So she can do her deposit.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I have the recording up to date. I have another, oh yeah, election training on the first of November for the tabulators. That one will be in Danville. And that's about it.
I was curious, so they're giving you all new machines for the tabulators? Right?
Yes.
Is, I think they take away that big plastic thing?
No.
So you're still going to be able to use that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Not just going to be another useless hunk of plastic?
No.
Oh, good.
No, we will still use that.
Okay.
And that's about it for me.
Treasurer's report.
Over the past two weeks, money has been flying in, with Robin's help. Payroll, $8,678.26. Accounts payable, $40,287.97. Cash receipts, we took in $831,658.86. Majority current taxes, delinquent taxes, land recording, copies, zoning. We have one direct deposit coming from the state for $108, which was recording and copies. Over the past two weeks, I transferred $900,000 over into our money market. So we received our two bids for fuel. We have Gillespie's.
You want to give those to her?
So Gillespie's came in for oil, $3.48. From the New England Commercial Fuel Fighters Association, which is... Oh, where are we? Who took it over?
Does it say here's your president?
Yeah, but I was just looking for the company company. Anyway, so, the other offer for propane was $1.75. Would the select board like to make a decision?
Sure.
It does appear that Gillespie's is cheaper on the propane, and the fuel bid is whatever it's good.
So I will do our pre-buy, and cut the check, and let them know that they have taken it, and I will notify the other...
Let me just make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you make a motion, okay. I'll second it, and all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ooh, great news, great news.
Oh yeah, the elevator?
So, the gentleman, Lyft.
Yeah, sorry.
Accessibility Systems, Bob Weber. So Bob is the one who installed our Lyft, years ago, years ago, and had this cute little story, and I'll tell you. He says, "All you need to note is to find out who I was, was ask the guy who painted the door that owns the garage in town." At the time, they had removed the door, and Brian Shatney had painted it in his garage. Anyway, the only thing that was wrong with our Lyft is there was a bad rubbing where the magnet shuts the door, rust had built up. All he did was clean off the rust, boom, Lyft works perfectly. And I will not be using the other company at all.
So when time comes for another inspection or maintenance?
You'll get an earful.
Yeah. Wow, that's great news.
Wonderful news. I was very disappointed in the other company.
Did you, yeah, leading you on like that.
Almost $900 bucks for the last two visits of saying we needed to replace our Lyft.
So, yeah. So did you look in the file? There's a file in there called Lyft, I think?
Ever since.
Is that where you found the?
I've been here, we've always used the same company.
Yeah.
And the same vendor.
Oh, yeah.
I remember, and of course, when we switched vendors, I never had this company in the system.
Yeah.
So, it's always been the same.
I just wonder how you found them. Did you find him by looking in the file?
I was doing bids, going up for bids.
Oh.
He was one of the companies. And he said, "I was slightly disappointed that you guys never called me," because when he installed it, there was no state inspections. So, that's when they started later, years down the road. So, I will be using him then.
Great.
So no stairway, no?
That's good.
Building.
It's great.
No great big long ram.
Uh huh, no protests.
This week, so taxes are due on Friday. My air, I'm getting an extra day. Office hours are going to be regular, tomorrow night will be open from 6 to 8. Wednesday, I will not be open. Thursday, at nighttime.
Yes.
During the day, we will have the same 9:00.
Oh, okay.
So Wednesday evening, no hours. Thursday, again, 9 to 1, and then 6 to 8. On Friday, I am doing only 5 to 7. There's the pumpkin walk, and I want to come see the kids. So, you're waiting until Friday, 5 to 7.
Is there my 7?
That's it. Yes!
Do you want me to post those hours on the website?
Yes, please. I will be putting it up from Port Forum and Gary Clark's site tonight.
Send me an email.
What's that?
If you send me an email.
Oh, yeah, I will do that. The other thing, and postmarks, I accept postmarks. There's the drop-offs on the porch, yeah.
We always warn people that if they're going to, don't just throw it in the mailbox on the postmark day, the last postmark day. They have to hand it to the clerk and make sure it gets posted.
There's still a few.
I know.
You open the dropbox and go, "It's not really worth it, I got my money now," so...
Yeah, so now we've got this Brookfield Service contract.
And that's just for...
For the school.
I mean, if you guys wanted to review it. My thing is just keeping in line what the cost is when we do budgeting in the summer. That was my big thing, with that coming through.
Now, why are these two, why are there two here? Oh, retain this copy for your record. Oh, I see, okay. So, program number one, complete annual major service, $962, or $914 if prepaid by November 1. Program number two is two visits a year, major and minor service, $1,568, or $1,490. Norm, you want to say anything about that? Oh, I know you're not the... Or Paul?
What are we talking, I missed the start of this.
This is about the generator.
Twice a year or once a year?
And it's all, I mean, because we didn't...
Being the age it is, I would recommend doing it twice a year.
Yeah.
I know we've kind of got into trouble when we were doing it once a year.
We had problems before. We're checking it once a month ourselves, but I'm just giving it oil and water, just making sure, that's what I recommend.
Okay. What do you think?
I would go with his advice. I don't really know that much about generators.
All righty.
It's got not a lot of hours, it's just got a lot of years on it.
Yeah, okay. So I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. So that's 50, should we, $1,490 versus $1,568? So that's like 70, $80 if we pay it by November 1. You think we should? Can you do that? Which is next?
No, I can do it. It's just, it's not in the right calendar year, and then I start twitching.
Oh. You really want to?
This school year. No, if you guys approve it, then that's where I pay it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all here.
I got you.
We'll take that too.
I don't need to sign it anywhere?
No.
Okay.
One is enough.
Thank you. So, I believe that's it.
That's it for you?
Almost.
Michael Gray.
Okay. So, first thing on my list is that the planning commission is down to five members, and I know the town would like to have seven members on the planning commission. So we put out an inquiry on the town through the Port Forum and the Woodbury Facebook page, and we did get Juan Taper. His name is Andrew Delaney, and he did come to our planning commission meeting last Monday, and the planning commission got to meet him, and he stayed for the meeting and is still interested in serving on the planning commission. He does have experience. When he lived in the town of Bethel, he was on the planning commission for 10 years, and was the chair of it for a good number of years. And he's also a lawyer, which that might prove helpful at some point. And the planning commission did vote to request that the select board appoint him to the planning commission.
Yeah, and Lucy and I were both at that meeting, so we got to meet him. What do you think?
Can we appoint him as the dog catcher too, and kill two birds?
I'll teach him how to come to the meeting.
I'll make him a handy.
He does have a dog.
Yeah, two dogs.
I don't know if we should do that or not.
I'm just kidding.
I'd say he thought it was a great idea.
So, you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint him.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Fine. Okay, you'll give him the good news, right?
I will give him the good news.
I guess we do have a letter we send to people who are appointed, so Rob can work on that.
Contact, although maybe in the text.
I'm sure we've got his address.
His address, yeah. So the next thing on my list, and just a little background on this, it's the bylaw modernization grant, which last week at our planning commission meeting, we had invited Christian Meyer and Claire Rock from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission to kind of come and just discuss with us different projects that they have on their work list for the town of Woodbury. And one of the things that Claire had mentioned to us is this bylaw modernization grant, which would be a grant that would basically pay for, or help pay, provide the town funds for revising and updating its zoning bylaws, for zoning ordinance. Unfortunately, the application is due on November 1, so it's kind of a scramble thing. And I do have some information about it here that I'm happy to hand out. One of the things that needs to happen is that there's fiscal year 24 municipal resolution for bylaw modernization, a form that basically is the select board approving the planning commission of the town applying for this grant. And I can explain a little bit more about the grant. It's for up to $25,000. There is a 10% match that if the town were to complete its zoning bylaws within two years, that grant would be forgiven.
Complete and have it adopted.
Complete and adopted, yes. So that, the town match would be forgiven. There's also the possibility and a request for the town to just put up a little money towards the project. It helps, it's a little check in the criteria for who does and doesn't receive the grant award. It can be left out. I think we did a similar grant, the planning commission for the town plan, and I don't think we did commit any town money to it, and we still got the grant. So, it's just, it's a kind of a moot point. So, I know that you don't have much information about this, but I know the planning commission thought it was a good idea. We did vote to go for the application, but it is up to the, to the select board, basically what we're going to review this. So I can show you, here is the, here's the actual form for the select board. And here are some credentials for the, I printed one for Chris, who I didn't realize that he would be there, or not be here. And then, let's see, here, I also have the application, which Jim Skitehelm and I are working on with the help of a person at the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission.
So if we sign this, then you will get it in by November 1? I think that's a whole week away.
And if you don't feel that you can sign it, then we'll probably just wait till next year.
Well, in your town plan, in the award-winning town plan, you did point out one of your goals was to update our bylaws from 1973, or whatever. And that needs to be done. I think, basically, that's, she did say that, I mean, I think Claire said that maybe $15,000 was a more appropriate number. I still think, you know, I just hope we don't end up with something that's 50 pages long. But the planning commission will have the right to determine that, like you did with the plan, right? Like you did with the plan, you didn't have to take the long version.
There is a part of this application that does give, and I'll just read it so that other people know what's, after I get my glasses. We could designate the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission to be our agent, and basically... So it says on the, on your resolution form, it says, "Check the box if the municipality authorizes its regional planning commission to serve as the agent for the applicant municipality, or multi-town applicant municipalities," which is something else that happens with this grant. "By assisting with the preparation of the application, supporting grant administration, and being exempt from competitive selection if serving as project consultant." My understanding of this little paragraph is that we would, that we could just check the box that authorizes the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission to be our consultant agent. They're already helping us with the application, and then we wouldn't have to put this out to bid. We would just say, "Okay, Central Vermont..."
That seems a little too easy. I mean, didn't you have to go out to bid for the plan?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
And you ended up hiring them because they're so much cheaper?
That's correct.
Because, I mean, some consultants probably have a little choking up about the competitive nature of competing against a nonprofit that's funded by the state, but, you know...
Yeah, they did email me that.
Oh, did they?
They did, yeah.
Yeah.
So we can not check the box, and we can put it out to bid. And, you know, they have been helping us with the application, and I guess they're okay with doing that either way. And I have no opinion either way either. I'm fine with putting it out to bid. I know usually other, like the local hazard mitigation grant, we put that out to bid also, and the regional planning commission was the lowest bid, so I sort of anticipate that they will be again. But I don't care either way, that's up to the select.
What do you think about our purchasing policy and having to bid things that are more than $8,000? That kind of...
I think we settled, right, we settled that that was, $8,000 was the limit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not knowing what the numbers might be, it's kind of hard to say, well, it's going to be more or less than $8,000.
And right now, there is a person on the staff at the regional planning commission who is kind of, is getting those numbers for us.
Ah.
I mean, if we're already working with them, it kind of seems simple as to just stick with them, unless it contradicts our policy.
And I, you know, I trust them.
Claire's not going to be there.
Claire has, is already no longer a part of the Central Vermont Regional Plan.
So you just have to hope that whoever's left is as good as she was.
Yeah, there's a person named Eli Tuie that's kind of, that this has been passed on to. Person that I haven't met yet, it is a new staff person, I'm fairly familiar with. And, you know, we have till the 1st, you can look over the stuff and think about it, and let them know what you think. We don't, you don't have to make a decision tonight.
Well, I know that the, well, this is the last meeting we'll have before the 1st.
Right, yeah.
I know Hardwick hired somebody. Of course, they're in, they're in the Northeast Kingdom, so they're, they might not have as many resources at the Northeast Kingdom Regional Planning Commission, because they have a huge, huge region.
Do we have any kind of like window of what the anticipated costs may be?
I don't have an idea at the moment, no.
Okay.
I mean, if, you know, if we are awarded the grant, then of course the monies would come from the award, and the 10% match if we, and I would anticipate that if there was a two-year window, that the planning commission would make sure that this thing was done within two years. I wouldn't want to work on it any longer than that. So I'm pretty confident that it probably won't cost the town anything. And I don't think it would come near the $25,000.
Oh, God, no. I mean, that would be absurd.
And if we didn't get awarded the grant, could we just not do it? Do it another year?
Yeah, I think we could do it.
We might try to do it on our own, but we would probably reapply next year if we didn't get through the ward.
Yeah, I am concerned that, well, I mean, I think we should apply. Doesn't mean we have to accept it. I'm just, I'd like to find some, I don't know, it just seems like it could be so blown up, but...
Yeah, I would hope, I mean, I would hope that the Woodbury Planning Commission would, I mean, we don't want to make any, the zoning draconian, we don't want to make it a 50-page document, I mean, short and simple, and, you know, there will be a number of hearings that, it will be very similar to the process for, that we have for developing a town plan. There'll be chances for, many chances for public input on the thing. You know, because I know that there's a broad spectrum of opinions about zoning, and, you know, we definitely will make it so that it works for Woodbury.
of Woodbury is applying for funding as provided in the FY '24 Budget Act 78, and may receive an award of funds under said provisions, the Department of Housing and Community Development may offer a grant agreement to this municipality for said funding, and whereas the municipality is maintaining its efforts to provide local funds for municipal and regional planning purposes, or..." Yeah, we do pay our annual assessment to the regional planning commission. "...or that the municipality has voted an annual or special meeting to provide local funds for municipal and regional planning purposes. Legislative body of this municipality enters into and agrees to the requirements and obligations of this grant program, including a commitment to match funds in accordance with the program's requirements. Michael Gray is hereby designated as the grant administrator, the person with the overall administrative responsibility for the bylaw planning grant program, activities related to any, the application and any subsequent grant agreement positions." Your name's on there already, so thank you for that.
Yes, I filled it out a little bit.
And then, "The grant application is successful and funds are awarded. The following individual will be the signatory on behalf of the municipality." I don't know who, oh, it says, "The signatory must either be the chief executive officer, or a select board member, the town manager, city manager, or the town administrator." So, "Check the box if the municipality authorizes a regional planning commission to serve as the agent for the applicant municipality, or multi-town applicant municipalities. By assisting with the preparation of the application, supporting grant administration, and being exempt from competitive selection if serving as project consultant..." supporting grant administration, and being exempt from competitive selection if serving as project consultant." I mean, the box is already checked.
Well, I checked it, yes. But I can uncheck. I wasn't totally clear on what the, I mean, I read the language a few times and sort of...
I don't think this is gonna be a really huge job. I mean, there are certain state rules that have to be incorporated. But otherwise, it doesn't have to be a big deal. But I guess if, if we sign this and they decide on a number, then do we have to pay that number, even if we end up not using them very much?
Can't you wait until you get the numbers? Because they're working, since they're working on an estimate, right?
Yeah.
So I would wait until we got that and then decide.
Well, except that the application will run as number first. That's the catch, which is next Wednesday. What did, the woman's name, Eli, who is the staff person, she is getting estimates from different folks to have a sense of what the number would be that would go on the application. And, you know, I don't have a clue what that number would be. There is a listing on the application, which, did I give you a copy of the application? Which is, you know, Claire has partially filled the application out already before she left her job. And there's a kind of a scope of work there that she listed. I have a copy of that here, too.
Yeah, this work plan is all zeros.
Yeah, yeah, she doesn't have numbers, but she does have a listing of what the work would be. And, you know, Jim and I discussed, you know, how many public hearings, what kind of outreach we want to do, and which would also be added to that.
In Woodbury, renters are the most cost-burdened group. 28% of renters are paying 30% or more of income on housing costs. How do they know that? From census data, probably? According to 2020 data, there were only four vacant housing units available to rent.
So, Michael, these are just two separate parts of the grant application. So we're not, we're asking for money, but we're not really committing, like, town funds anyway, right?
No.
Okay.
Other than the 10% match, which we would be reimbursed if we finished the zoning bylaws and had them approved by, let's see, it's November 1st, 2025. By the end of November. I think it's November 31st. So, yeah, we aren't committing any new town funds.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm really not okay with, without a number. I mean, if they tell us it's gonna cost $10,000, I think that's outrageous. We don't need to do that. They can pay me $2,000. I'll do it.
Okay.
I still have my consulting business. No, but really, I think...
Of interest, but... Sure, well, we can put it out to bid and you, and submit a bid.
Oh, no, I'm just kidding about that part. But it's, yeah, I mean, it does seem like if they could blow it out of proportion. I mean, what did we, they, we had a grant for the plan for what, $10,000? Plus the town put $10,000 in. Do you remember?
Don't recall, but I don't believe the town put a lot of money into that plan.
No.
It was all volunteer work.
Right, oh, God, yeah, Tom. But, I mean, I think we did put in $10,000 one year.
In the town meeting, did we approve $10,000?
$10,000, yeah.
I think so.
And that was, that was, you know, the estimated cost. And so, you know, the league, excuse me, Regional Planning Commission came in around $10,000. So, you know, we were right on budget.
And then you, you did apply for another grant that we got for public outreach, if you remember that.
That's correct. And so that was, again, no harm to the town budget. And, you know, I would advocate that the select board sign that because, you know, you're not encumbering any town plan, excuse me, any town funds. And, you know, they have a proven record of, you know, being experts in their field. And I don't see where it's not a good, you know, good deal for the town.
I am hoping to have figures in the next few days. So, you know, if you want to, I don't know if you can tentatively approve it tonight and face, and then if the amount that comes in is outrageous, then we could just put the application in the recyclement.
Could be, like, approve it with a cap, like a cap to the cost.
I really don't have any idea how much it might cost, though. So whoever is looking for prices is probably looking at other towns and what they pay maybe, or...
In the email that I got back from Eli today, they were basically consulting with different, other different entities to get a sense of the price. And Claire probably could have just... Done it alone. And the other part is, you know, you know, let's say we, if the application was for $20,000, and if we only spent $10,000, then that would be, you know, we don't have to spend all of the money that we applied for.
Oh, okay, so if they, so if we, so if we check the box and they come up with $10,000 for an estimate and a grant, you don't think they're gonna want the whole thing?
Probably. I mean, that's, that's kind of business as usual, isn't it? But maybe not, you know, it depends on how much we involve them, depending on how much the planning commission involves them. And how much of the grant work we do ourselves.
Well, I guess, oh, this is the application. Where's this? Let me see that one. So this is the, oh, yeah, this, yeah. Resolution for bylaw modernization. So... I guess I wouldn't mind signing this if we unchecked the box.
Okay.
And then if we want to go back and revise it and check the box later, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Well...
Once we get a number.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, we can, the catch is, there won't be another select board meeting where you could decide on what, how, how you want that number to read.
Yeah.
Unless you wanted to call a special meeting, which I doubt you want to do.
Okay. Well...
I do have a copy here that where the box is not checked. If you want to trade.
What do you think?
I don't have a problem with not putting the box checked.
There you go.
Go one way that you don't want.
I mean, we're not gonna be, Woodbury is not gonna be paying the money regardless as long as we get it done within two years, so...
All right.
To me, if it streamlines everything to use them, and if they've worked with us before and we trust them, it seems like it would just be the easiest thing.
Okay. So you want to sign both of them and wait till...
Sure.
You want to just go ahead and whatever they want?
I'm good with that. Sign both.
The other ones. I would like stimulus to let me know.
And I'm willing to be the, the signatory.
Okay.
Since I'm sort of involved with the whole planning business. You want to fill that in on your computer when, my information, or do I handwrite it in here?
Maybe handwrite it in.
Okay.
I know I have, there's a, oh, I have to hand-sign it, which I haven't done. So in the next two days, we'll come up with a figure, and I will let you know what it is, and then we can decide which form.
Okay.
Or, yeah, I think, sounds like if the money figure doesn't appear to be outrageous, then we're okay with using the form with the, authorizing them to be the agent. And if it seems outrageous, then we'll put it out to bid.
Do you need us to sign the other one, too? This one?
No.
Uh, that's the application itself.
Okay, so we don't have to sign that?
No, that was just kind of for your information to see what, what they're asking for.
So who will determine if it's outrageous? The planning commission or the select board?
The select board.
I don't really have any point of reference to know what, what is outrageous.
Oh, shoot, made me in the wrong place.
So I'll let you know when I know, and you can let me know which form to use.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, if it was, if the deadline wasn't so soon, you know, we could kind of wait another...
They both have the box checked.
They do?
He's got some more, yeah.
Cross one out.
We both played. Oh, wow, you copy.
Yeah. Sneaky. I guess I don't have to Google it. Well, I should do.
I thought one was unchecked, because that, it was one that Jim and I were looking at yesterday. Oh, well.
Oh, well. So I don't have to fill in both of them?
No, I guess not.
Okay, all right. Oh, thank you.
Well, I'll let the, well, Diana does have some experience with this stuff, so she would know whether it was outrageous amount. John, he was just asking me, how, how would we know that it was an outrageous amount? And I wouldn't know, but you do have some familiarity with this stuff.
I'm gonna talk with the lady in Hardwick who's working with a, they're working with a consultant. Of course, Hardwick is four times the size of Woodbury, but they are working with a consultant, and I'm interested in finding out how that's going. But I think more than $10,000 would be outrageous.
So let's see, that's one of those. Okay, so I did want to, where is it? Oh, good, I have the last one here. So the other thing, is there anything more about the, this application that, are we pretty much finished with that?
I think we're good, right?
Okay, all right. So I wanted to just give everybody an update on the outdoor classroom. I've been kind of wondering about it myself. So I sent an email to Joe Houston or Houston, I'm not sure how he pronounces his last name. There are two, two different families in the area. But anyway, he sent an email back to me saying that there are two projects that they're still working on. One is a shoreline development project and a, with a resulting permit for the classroom. And then the other is a design print that needs to be created and then approved by the fire marshal. So those are the two projects that they're working on right at the moment. And then he mentioned that once those two permits are approved, they have an engineer ready to start, to put together some structural plans. And it's his hope that the project will be ready to break ground in the spring.
I've seen plans for this, that, like, they already have?
Yeah, really.
Well, yeah, Michael Sadler did kind of put together some plans and back when we were working on this, and Peter Pelso was still a part of the committee, and Larry Elgin, still, you know, the kind of the school maintenance person, the whole OSSU. They did work out some plans and materials and costs and all of that. But, you know, the thing that's kind of sad about this is that because, you know, it was gonna be a school-town kind of joint project, and, you know, so the town would have use of the building also. But the fact it's a public building and it's related to the school, the whole, what has to be done, totally blown out of proportion in my opinion. So it's just been kind of dragging for quite a while. And my concern was, well, they've sort of tabled it because of every, everything else. And, you know, the town has a bunch of money that is promised towards this project. And I thought if they weren't gonna do it, then we could use the money elsewhere. So that was why...
Because maybe you couldn't just push it down that way onto the land that the town owns. Oh, well, not too late for that.
There is a nice spot for it down there. We did clear it out and, you know. But it was gonna be a very simple project where the, you know, people in town would help put it together, and Larry was gonna be a part of it, and, you know, it just got totally railroaded by...
Bureaucracy.
Bureaucracy, yeah, which is kind of sad. But it would still be, I think, a nice thing to have at some point in the future.
So we found out when I was studying the mill pond that shoreline regulations only apply if a body of water is larger than 10 acres, I think?
Well, this has something to do with the fact that it's a wetland area. So there's other criteria for, yeah.
In a conditional use.
Yeah, so...
So it's less than 100 feet wave?
It is where the, where the plan is to put the, the building.
Thank you for that update. Oh, but the other thing is that the fire alarm thing.
Right, so back when Larry was still involved in this project and still, you know, the head of the maintenance for the elementary schools and OSSU. And Paul probably knows some about this, too, but, you know, he met with the fire marshal and in part of having that building, you know, be under code or whatever as a part of a school classroom or whatever, there were certain criteria for, that were needed. And the solution that they came up with is that there would be a fire alarm system for the library community, for this building. And at the point, at that point in time, sort of makes, you know, maybe we should have that anyway. Because, you know, it would be nice to have some kind of fire alarm for, for this building. And I think the issue, I was on the select board then, I think, the issue was that we hadn't budgeted it, the system. And we did pick someone. I don't know where those, because Larry did find, get some bids submitted.
Yeah, I came across the notes today. I was cleaning out my notebook and found where we did select the guy from Hardwick, I think Bill Avance is his name? M E I, maybe is the company name? But, yeah, where the bits of paperwork is.
I, I had them for a while, and I did bring them down to the town office and put them on Brandy's desk. So Brandy probably knows where they are.
Because someone from OSSU was in the office when I was in there last week. Asking about, yeah, asking about whatever we came up with, yeah.
What is the thought process? I, it seems like we could just have smoke detectors and CO2 detectors and not go through the expense of having a whole system installed.
Well, the smoke detectors could go off, but if there's nobody in the building, who's gonna know that they're going off? I mean, Paul probably...
I spoke, I spoke to the fire marshal about this. Technically, this building's in violation because it's a school.
Oh, okay.
All schools are, because part of the school was not physically attached.
Gotcha.
Because I asked the same question. In fact, I used to have the job for the guy.
Okay.
This technically should have had a fire alarm system from day one, and it doesn't. So what it sounds like they're doing is trying to get this resolved. They're gonna cut you not having to run it out to the gazebo classroom.
Oh, okay.
Technically, that would, too, is what he's saying. If you fix this problem, it won't make you address that.
Oh, got it.
Because it's kind of an outdoor cabana, if I remember. It's not a closed building. Because I asked the same question. I had lunch with him once and asked him, what's going on with it?
Now that you mention that, Paul, I do remember... Now that you mention that, Paul, I do remember Larry saying that also.
They're just trying to rectify this problem, they're saying basically fix this problem and we'll let that be.
Yeah, so this isn't like a choice, this is like, there's a role that we-
Yeah, that's what it sounded like to me. Because it really should have had, why it didn't, I couldn't tell you why, but-
So we probably, I mean-
I, you know, I just bring it up now because we, we had sort of planned on it, but it hadn't been budgeted, but, you know, pretty soon the select board will be creating a budget for the next fiscal year and maybe we would want to include this in the budget.
Or maybe, was it-
Do we insure this building or does the school, I can't remember that.
We, we insured this building.
So one other place you can look is if, this is under the league. The league has a grant program twice a year that you could apply for that would pay toward that fire alarm system.
That's true, because we did that for the town hall. It was a 50/50 match, if I remember.
Yep, that's right. So I think it's like October and April, I know April's one of the deadlines you could apply. You definitely want to rebid because everything's a lot more expensive than it used to be.
Because the bid is at this point almost two years old. But you have a copy of the-
We do have a, we did, uh, we budgeted, uh, library fire alarm, $12,000. So we'll have to redo that, I guess, in the next fiscal year, in the next budget coming up.
And we said the league, the greatest, you mean the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, okay.
Yeah, they've got a grant program, we've applied for stuff at the fire department. I think it's a, a next deadline would be April. If you want to just get a bid and apply, it's a pretty simple application.
So, yeah, that's definitely over $8,000, so we'll have to bid that again, huh?
So we have, the town-
Unless the guy who-
Right, so it's under the league, you can definitely apply for it.
And the school insures.
That one, I could remember, I knew they, I knew they did that one, I couldn't remember if this was part of it.
So what if the person who got the bid decides to, he would stay with that bid? Could we just, I guess we could ask?
It's about 7% right now.
Really? Wow.
Coster. Yeah, hang on, hang on is all I'll tell you.
So there's just one other thing here and then I will sit and listen. So another thing that was mentioned, and by the way, just a little aside, because we haven't had one yet tonight, usually we have a few, but Christian Meyer, who is the executive director of the regional planning commission, is John Meyer's son. So he does have kind of a indirect connection to the town, it was interesting to learn that. So that's just an aside. But anyway, when, when they came, Christian and Claire, they also mentioned that they had, the Center for Vermont Regional Planning Commission has received a chunk of money, I think it's from the state, it's entitled a municipal technical assistance program. And Woodbury is on the proven proof list of towns that might not have the administrative expertise to take advantage of various grant programs that are available. And that's definitely true. So, they were just kind of asking the planning commission and, you know, kind of just wanted to bring that out here of other people with ideas for different projects or that might be, thinking, what sort of grant that might help pay for that? That they would be able, you know, we could have them research that for us. And if there was, then they would help us to apply for that, for where the grant is.
I was gonna talk to the select board tonight about maybe going back to our town hall renovation project. And, because we had done a bunch of work and put together an application for ARPA money that did not get approved, but it's still a good project and there are, I know Vermont Housing and Conservation Board is one place that does do historic buildings as well as conservation. So that's kind of a community development, it's not an economic, but it's a community development kind of project that I still think we need a better place than this.
Yeah, although this is above the-
Well, so is the town hall, just barely. So anyways.
A lot of three steps.
So that's just something, you know, we can explore that more in the future, but if there is some ideas,
So, yeah, there was some talk in the legislature last year about how some poor towns can't take advantage of all this stuff that's out there, so the legislature funded a program to help poor towns like us. Who have some very capable people, but just not quite enough to do everything. Okay.
I'm done.
You're done? Alfie? You still awake?
Uh, yeah, barely.
What was that thing I saw down at Buck Lake Road today?
That is an excavator with a jackhammer on it.
I thought maybe so.
Yeah, so both excavators are now on site and they are ready to go into action tomorrow.
Ooh. I had asked our resident geologist to give us a little report based on him having been there and when he said he wasn't gonna be here today, I emailed him twice and said, can you please just tell us your opinion? I haven't heard, so I guess we'll have to go with you.
Yeah, well, we, we met with engineers on site. And both engineers were saying that it's not stable. And that it would be an astronomical amount of money to fill the hole. So we thought, somebody mentioned maybe a bridge, a type of bridge that we could sort of bridge over the slide. But both engineers again said, there's nothing here to hook to. And there's nothing saying that it's not gonna slide more. So, the next idea was to jackhammer the ledge out that is on the uphill side and just sort of move the trail over, essentially. And so that sort of was the general consensus of everybody that was at the meeting, being the best solution.
You said there were two engineers there?
There was, there was a soils engineer.
Oh, okay.
And then there was an engineer from Wolf.
Brian, somebody here?
Yeah. So they both said that this is not stable and it's no way to really fix it without crazy money. So this is, and this is actually going to be, if, when we pound this ledge out, it's more of a permanent fix, it's not just a temporary. Because now the trail is sitting on solid ledge and it's not going anywhere, particularly in that location. There might be other spots on the trail that slide or fail, but this spot will be solid.
I was also hoping that Chris would talk to Rock of Ages or Swenson, rather, and make sure that they're all okay with it, because they still own the land.
Yeah, well, I brought that up also as to whether to, now that we're sort of moving the trail, we're moving it on to somebody else's, somebody's property. And he said that it is not Swenson's. And that, that particular location is not Swenson's property. So, that kind of lead me to think though, well, maybe we should do some more homework before we-
Yeah, because whose is it?
Right, I'm not sure, I'm a, I don't know.
I think it's, according to other people who looked at it, I forget if it was Pete or somebody else, but there is a woman who owns a piece of land that's basically inaccessible. Tracy something. And her land is like behind Stewart's and goes down to, in between the, what?
It should be on the-
Oh, yeah, yeah, Tracy Fritz, I think, maybe something like that. She used to call once in a while and say, how can I log my land, I don't have any access and, you know. Because her, she does go down to the road, but, you know.
Right, she should be able to access the trail.
Yeah.
Use the trail for logging.
That has happened in the past, yeah.
In the right, in the right time of year, I mean, I wouldn't suggest it in the spring, but, you know, during mud, or during frozen ground. So I, I confirmed it with Chris and he says, yeah, let's go for it.
Okay, so he did look at, yeah, he has been there then and-
Oh yeah, he was there and he, like I said, the general consensus of everybody that was at that meeting said the best way to go about this is to smash that ledge out.
Oh, so he was at that meeting? Did he?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
Chris was there also.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
So, the engineer also said he would write an email explaining that. Explaining his, his, that he would not be necessary for engineering this particular site with our new, and I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but he said he was gonna send an email out to the select board. Maybe he just hasn't got that done yet, but, given the time of year, we don't want to wait. And that was sort of what I took from Chris, was let's get going on it. So I arranged for an excavator to come. The rental that we've already had is on site also.
So we're using the big one?
They're both big.
Oh, okay.
They're both very big.
So will all the town go up there working on it tomorrow?
Uh, except for me, because I'll be in the office tomorrow doing FEMA with this guy.
So you're letting somebody else do the jackhammer thing?
I'm gonna be there in the morning to start them.
Okay.
And, yeah, I have no choice, I mean, Greg is actually, that was another part of my report. Greg is, Wednesday is his last day this week. And he's got a doctor's appointment tomorrow, so Greg's not gonna be very useful for us for the next little bit.
And Joe?
Joe's fine, he's full bore. And Timmy's right there beside me, we're, we're, we're good. We have put a couple of trucks together for the event, we get a little bit of white stuff or frozen ground.
Geez.
It's in the air.
Six weeks from now, Mal, what you got?
Cold pond yesterday.
It's snowing out in six weeks.
So Alfie, I, I'm just wondering, if we don't yet know for sure who owns the property, how can we commence work without permission from them?
Well, the partial relief that we have is that there's, there should be a 50-foot right-of-way.
Okay, so we're staying within that?
So I think we're gonna be within that right-of-way.
Okay, got it.
I haven't really looked at that.
I'm assuming, I haven't, I haven't really identified anything that says that we have a 50-foot, but most right-of-ways are 50-foot.
Is there any chance that this would be a temporary repair and then the, a bridge would be a more permanent repair? That we should put in for FEMA, no?
I don't.
Okay, alright.
Because of-
Because there's still gonna be like a big drop-off, but I guess those people-
We'll have to put up, we'll have to put up some sort of railing or something.
Yeah.
Which the snow machine club is also willing to help with some of this. They're, they're gonna cough up some money. They said they, Steve Gray that was here at the meeting, said that he would help with the railing.
They're gonna put up $10,000.
Some sort of, some sort of railing just to keep snow machines from tumbling over. You know, that big drop-off. So, I've got some allies, this is a big project, there's no doubt. But, given the time, we gotta, we gotta act on it, we gotta move on. And it sounds like, I was supposed to meet with FEMA this morning on site so they could get their eyes on it and they totally blew me off.
Oh, no kidding, again? Do they know how far it is and how hard it is to get there? Did you have to like bring your ATV or something or?
I didn't, I didn't, I was, I was just gonna walk it with them.
By the way.
So that was gonna be part of my report. Last Tuesday on the 17th, we had a conference call with FEMA and we were aware that FEMA wanted to go out and see the rail trail. So we asked our FEMA contact, when could the site inspector be out? So, on the phone, she yelled over to one of her colleagues, when can you go out and see it? And the gentleman replied, any day, anytime, next week. So it was like, okay, Alfie wanted Monday, because he wanted to start work. And so we had arranged for FEMA site inspector to come out and be on site at 9:00 AM. And I called Alfie today and it didn't happen again. So this is the second time it doesn't happen. So, and that's pretty disappointing. So with that, I called my FEMA contact and I said, so what's going on? You know, this is the second time, as Alfie said, it's a huge project. Probably the largest one we have in town. And she didn't know. So we have another conference call tomorrow with her and that'll be top on the agenda. Why won't the site inspector come out? We've only had one site inspector come out. And that was our first project scoping meeting back on September 11th, September 7th. And this gentleman went out with Alfie and visited three sites. We've yet to receive his report back, which leads me to believe that we won't be getting these site reports, which is okay, because we have enough documentation using photos and using hours and material costs, equipment costs, we have, we qualified all that information. So shame on them for not sending a site inspector.
So, would they be happy with maybe a video?
No videos.
No? The drone? No, unbelievable.
Well, that's another part of my report.
Okay, well-
It'd be much better now, I'm not the only one still.
Pictures are, pictures are fine, but it's not essential. So we have enough pictures of the rail trail and all our other sites to satisfy. Video would be just, who would shoot the video? Who would shoot the video?
Well, I guess that would be, I don't know.
Get the work done.
Hire Jim, yeah, well, I can, I can hold the phone in my mouth and run the-
Take it to your helmet.
One of those on your helmet you can use.
Oh, yeah, like a GoPro or something, yeah.
Get you a body cam. So we're, we're underway on that.
I will need to estimate the cost of that repair.
Yes, we're still working on that. As numbers are coming in, you know, I've got the rentals, I've got the, you know.
How do you refuel the thing, you have to bring it all out and?
Uh, no, I got, I got a tank on my truck and I just bring it to the, to the machine. Fill them up from there.
Yikes.
Which I'll have to do first thing in the morning, because they'll- Fill the rental one, the new rental is probably full, the one we just brought there is not. But I have a tank right on the back of my truck and pump it in there, so.
Hopefully with that heavy equipment, more of the rail trail loss.
Well, there's that, there is that. You know, it's a heavy machine and it's doing this, it's creating vibration as it's, you know. So we're gonna be, I told the guys, we have to be extremely careful with this all the way through, bringing trucks in and out or-
Is there like special headgear that you should wear or something or helmets or?
The action seeks to-
The machine has a, a shield on it, so that if rocks fly, it'll, it won't come through the windshield. So there's that. We can, it, we'll figure out how loud it is, maybe we need to wear air protection.
Oh wow, I was more concerned about falling over the edge.
Well, that would be where the-
The ground, where the rain had this weekend, the ground is once again totally saturated with water. That's kind of-
Yeah, it didn't rain that much, did it?
We got over, we got about two inches of-
Six called in weather this weekend.
Our rain gauge said it was three and a half inches.
Three and a half.
Well, it didn't rain.
So, I am not trying to beat a dead horse with this. Should we be like 100% verifying that there is a 50-foot right-of-way for the rail trail? Like ASAP, before the work commences?
Well, I think, I think Chris will can do that a little bit and maybe he's got, maybe he can enlighten us.
Brian Shatney-
Brian Shatney.
Maybe an email to him would, would satisfy that.
Okay.
Brian Shatney might know, 'cause he was part of the rail trail committee and, you know, that's not a town road, the rail trail.
Right.
So, um, and I don't know whether they, if it's official, I mean, it is a, a trail and there was a committee that oversaw, but Brian might know, um, if there is a right-of-way with that trail. 'Cause I know they would go and clear trees and brush on the sides of it.
Well, wouldn't that, I mean, that should be spelled out in the lease. I mean, we have a.
It should be somewhere. I mean, we.
Yeah.
For that. The lease would have gone through, if it goes through multiple properties, it would have affected all of them.
Right. So how could one look that up? Like go into the town office and look in the drawers?
Robin knows where the file is.
Yeah, do you, you have access to that?
The rail trail file, yeah. Being the land designated as that portion of the right-of-way of a private railroad spur commonly known as the Hardwick-Woodbury Railroad Line extending from the northerly side of Holton Road in the town of Woodbury to the co, and that doesn't make sense, but to the common town line in the towns of Hardwick and Woodbury. A portion of the foreset right-of-way comprising the leased premises is highlighted on a copy of the Town of Woodbury Tax Map attached to this agreement as Exhibit A, which of course it isn't, but, um.
Yeah, I never like to assume anything, but I would assume that a lawyer probably wrote that lease up.
Uh-huh.
So that they would have made sure that we have right to, to maintain, you know, a certain distance. Something to verify would be what that distance is.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause we are gonna move it a bit.
Yeah, but it'll be within the 25 feet.
If it's, yes.
Yeah.
Anyways.
But Chris, Chris did do some research on that, some quite certain, so I think he might be, be able to help quite a lot with that.
It's kind of odd how on this map, it shows this right, this, uh, um, right-of-way rectangular thing up to the property line of Fritz and, Fitz rather, and then
Yeah, it changes.
Nothing again until you get to part of Saru, but I don't know what that means. It's been there for what, 20 years? So how long do you have to spend with FEMA tomorrow?
I'm gonna zip tie him to the chair. So we can't wait.
Uh, yeah, I'm probably gonna show up somewhere around 11:00.
Yeah.
FEMA call kicks off at 9:00 AM, so hoping they'll have some timely information for us on a couple of things, which I'll get into. And then Danielle and I will start working on damage inventories and then Alfie will come in. And hopefully we won't keep you too long. 'Cause we're, you know, we're getting to it. We have, you know, a lot of work that we've already completed, but there's more work to do. But, and that's part of my presentation. I won't go overboard here.
Okay.
So other than that, I mean, we're just, we've cleaned up a bunch of landslides last week, got those done in anticipation of this big project. I'm still trucking sand when I can. Um, we're halfway there for our, for the amount that we've purchased. But we'll get it. We'll, we'll, we'll have time. I've got one truck in the shop right now and I made an appointment. I had to wait for two weeks to get an appointment. Uh, the appointment was for last Thursday. I called them today just to check in on them and they haven't even got it in the shop yet.
Oh, which truck is that?
The 13, 2013. The one that we're trading in. Uh, and while we're on trucks, the new truck is in, but it's December 1st before it goes and gets the body and files all put on. So I'm not anticipating seeing that until probably February or March. We'll have it for mud season certainly, but probably not before that.
Jackets come in in May, right?
Right, right. So that's kind of a bummer, 'cause they, they did tell us that as soon as the truck landed, they'd get it in and start building it, but here we are. So.
So you're getting the other one ready for winter?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, we've got a soft contract already signed. We should be all set with, with all of that. Still sort of searching for a part-time helper. But coming up into hand and so far.
So after hunting season, will Greg be available right-of-way or?
Uh, he said he would be able to help off and on, yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. He doesn't officially retire till the end of the year, right?
Until, right, until January.
Yeah, okay.
But even then, he said he would, he would still help out. But he goes to a maximum of 24 hours, 22 or 24 hours per week. That's all he can work, just because of his retirement. Which is fair. I mean, that's, you know.
Whatever the rules are.
Typical. Any questions? Up roads?
I have, I have a question for you Alfie, 'cause we were here in the same room for the tour. So today I was part of a crew that went up to the top of Woodbury Mountain and removed, um, a number of signs that were.
There's more to there.
To a tree up there. Most of them were Woodbury road signs. Can I just bring them, and they have graffiti over them. They're probably no good anymore.
Right.
Can I just bring them, throw them in a dumpster at the town garage and leave them out for you guys to sort?
Yeah, there's a pile right at the corner of the building. That's where our, our recycle metal is.
Okay.
So you just put it in that pile and, uh.
And there were a couple of good sign poles that, um.
Oh, yeah. Well, if you just put it there, I'll sort through it and keep my good and get rid of the bad.
Hmm, alright. Was that a specific work project or?
It was a, a new kind of project.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, okay.
Those things are heavy.
They were, yeah.
Yeah, really.
So the panel steel from the side of the wall and take them up there.
They can go all the way up to the top of Woodbury Mountain.
Drop them off.
Drop, bolt them to a tree up there.
Really?
Really? They bolted them to a tree?
When I found the full bolt with a, with a road sign and a yield, so it was huge.
Uh, yeah, just put them there and I'll sort them over and, yeah.
So you wanna hang around for Skip's report after we hear from Paul or if you wanna go, you can?
Probably, I'll probably hear enough of him tomorrow.
Alfie, before you go, I have this for you. It's, um,
Oh, right.
A copy of the current employee policy.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Okay. But is this the one with?
That's the one that we all.
That's the one you're working on now?
Yeah, we all went through and like put edits and then gave Chris a version that has our collective edits.
Okay.
Um, so that obviously doesn't have those edits on it, but you could put your own thoughts on it. Yes.
Is it like finish, finish?
No.
People are just laughing. We're working on over here.
Yeah, it'll get done right after we finish the last four road policy. Okay, thank you Alfie and good luck this week.
Yeah, it's gonna be exciting.
So the, the one with the, um, jackhammer goes first and the other one?
Uh, they'll work side by side. Well, probably the hammer will smash it out first.
Yeah.
And the other one will clear the rubble.
Okay.
'Cause you gotta be able to see where you're, where you're backhammering.
Yeah.
So it'll be, you know, and it's kind of close corners, so you gotta kind of smash it out first and the other one come in and get rid of it.
Oh.
Yeah, it's gonna be exciting. But there's still, there's another culvert that I have to put in first before I can even get.
Oh, you want to get there? Oh. At that same location or at another further back?
Between Buck Lake and the, uh, slot. So, but I've got the culvert. It's already in. It's, it's already, it's, you know, it won't take us long to get there. So be free to drop by and pay a visit.
Yeah. I climbed up there once from Andy Rosen's property. It was a.
Oh, it's a hike.
Quite a climb, even though they have, have steps, but I never could do it now.
It's way easier to go down.
Huh?
That's quick.
Bye, thank you. Paul, thank you for hanging around.
No problem. Glad to hear someone else is spinning their wheels too. That's mostly what I'm doing. So my update is we're still waiting for the insurance company, which is holding us up on doing any FEMA submittal with the building. She can't. Michelle, you're working with Michelle too, right? So she's held up on writing up our building project because insurance company, they, we have to settle up with the insurance company. We're.
Which is VLCT?
Right, so we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 70K with the contents loss, which looks like that's covered and then we're in negotiations, 'cause they didn't, haven't credited us for the work gutting the building, work cleaning up in the building yet. So we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 90 to 125,000 damage to the building. So that's kind of.
Say that again, 70?
90 to, they got 91 is where we're at and it could be as high as 125. That's where. But I'm, they're, they're pretty unresponsive at the moment, so I don't, they're just, all I get is we're busy. So that's that. So, uh, are you gonna stick on FEMA or on the building? We didn't wanna hear first.
Doesn't matter.
So FEMA's, we're still grinding through. I've got, we're providing the information. I guess Michelle writes up these projects. Am I missing that?
Well.
My call, 'cause the, what I have, I don't have town roads. I have calls, the rescue calls. So I've gotta provide her with the timesheet, which I've gotta put all the stuff on, which is what I'm working on, and then GPS locations of the.
Did you provide her a damage inventory?
We have that. It, we, it's being put onto their spreadsheet now on the building, but again, we can do nothing with the building until the insurance company finishes.
That's not necessarily.
Well, that's what she told me last week. 'Cause she can't, she's like, can't write this project up yet.
What I did is I took the information from the town's insurance company, because you have a quote from them. And with that, I took that information and made a damage inventory. I already had a damage inventory started, excuse me, with the volunteers who governed it. So I was like a quote category A in this damage inventory. So the rest of the damage inventory included the cost of, uh, the stuff that was lost, cost to repair the walls, cost to refinish the southern floor and submitted that. So with that, what she'll do is she'll issue a project number. And she's key, she's the only one that can issue project numbers. And absent project numbers, you're kind of dead in the water.
Right, and that's what she told us and she's, she, well, I'm frustrated in the process, 'cause I.
Don't tell me about first.
Yeah. We're really behind from where the town is, 'cause we just barely had our first follow-up. We had scoping and then a follow-up. So now we finally have what we need to start doing. I just got that last week.
If you need any assistance, if you want to know, just let me know.
Yeah, we will be in touch, 'cause I, I, so, so to add insult to injury, we've got the potential buyout, which I'll be sending Robin an email. I need to know the value of the existing station, because if it's, if the damage is more than 50% of the value of the building, then it moves us up the chain. That's part of why Michelle's, she doesn't, she needs all, I need to finish getting all this stuff. That some big wig from FEMA wheeled in here last week. He's the head of something around here. He's like the head honcho. And he's, he like got in front and he says, it's no problem. We're gonna, we're gonna, before winter, we'll get you a 3,000 square foot building built across the street to move your equipment and do it. I'm like, I've been trying for a year and a half. You're not gonna get a building.
Is that a guy named Craig Jones?
Uh, I got his card. It's like Tim something. He was the head of mitigation or something, the director of something. And I said, well, we have, we don't really need that. We need other things, but anyway. So I'm slowly compiling. I'll send you an email of if we can pull the lister's value of the building. We'll use that. So, so that's where we are. They, they denied us on the bank damage because there's no building there, so that's gonna be on our own. I kind of bought that, but it was worth the, it was worth the try. They will end up, once we put my, I've probably got 27 or 28 emergency calls in cleanup, which again, any of the basement pump we don't be put in is emergency, 'cause they had to say dealing with electro panels and whatnot. So that'll all, once those projects are done, we'll give them to her. She'll create a project number and they'll figure all that out. So really, it's the building. It's my understanding, 'cause you may not worry about this, that they'll cover whatever gap the insurance doesn't cover. Is that correct?
Yes. And any deductible you have as well.
Yeah, they, they might, VLCT might be combining our deductibles, is what I was told from Susan. From VLCT, but I'll find.
Combining the town office deductible?
With the fire station.
They shouldn't do that.
Yeah, that's why I said, okay.
Same policy, so.
But I'll, but again, I, I, what I, I need them to be responsive. I need them to, we're, we're at the point where this claim, we need to settle this claim, because we own the property. What's gonna happen is, um, we're, I've got the furnace fixed finally. And I've got a new chimney and I've got someone who's gonna come insulate and that's where we're gonna stop for now. 'Cause we're trying to get moved out of the town hall, 'cause it's really not cool to be in there. We can't really heat the space and. So that's the plan for the winter. So hopefully in the next month, we'll, I just, I'm hoping really hard.
The best way to proceed in my mind would be somehow to get a damage inventory in there, 'cause you can use that as a placeholder.
Right, that's, yes, that's what we're doing.
Once it gets in, then you can always go back and add the damage.
And that's exactly what she said. She's got that information. She's got the insurance company. You must've got an adjusters report, right, on the town hall, town clerk's office?
She has that.
She has that.
She has the insurance.
She has our list of, um, of, uh, content. So she has all that. So, but her little hiccup now is with the mitigate, with the potential buyout mitigation issues throws another monkey wrench in the work, is what she told me.
Do you know the date of when your damage inventory is due?
I do not right now.
Sixty days after your project scoping meeting.
Right, okay, so it was three weeks ago, yeah.
Three weeks ago, so you got time.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, I, I'll be calling you, 'cause I just, I'm a little lost in the, in the whole. So, so that's where we're at with that. So hopefully we'll get out of the town hall. And I don't know what's gonna happen after that. We'll just kind of see what happens. We're all wishing really hard.
Well, nothing much happens in there in the winter anyways.
No, but it's, the problem is we're being slammed with calls. We're at 170 calls already this year.
So some of that stuff you need.
We're just getting hammered. We're not having easy calls. We're having a lot of really tough calls. We've already had one fatality this weekend, a back car accident. Two people burned last weekend in a house fire. So we're having a lot of really tough calls. So it's, I'm having the struggle of keeping things operating and trying to get all this paperwork done. It's just been a lot.
Aren't you glad you're retired?
Yeah. And then my works decided to be busy. There's gonna be all over the place. So anyway, we're trying. We'll get, we'll meet the deadlines, but, um, one thing, an emergency management director is not here, but we, I gathered up a bunch of cleanup kits and equipment that we're going to need to find a home for. Something to have on your radar is maybe the town purchasing a storage container to store our emergency response supplies, 'cause we aren't gonna have room for this stuff. There's like wheelbarrows and fans and buckets with cleaning stuff and that sort of stuff. Like a week, two weeks after the flood, we dropped a whole bunch and there's a bunch in the town hall and I've got a bunch in the fire station. We're gonna find another home for it, 'cause I just don't have room for it. So anyway, that's the site. So something to be thinking about. I mean, talk to the EM director and we might look at doing that to put that stuff in, so we have it in one spot for the next time something happens. Uh, so that's the circumstance with the building, the, hopefully get out of the town hall, I'm hoping, but we'll see. And then across the street with nothing on the bank, so that's where we're at.
So you really think they intend to build you a building?
I smiled. There's no way they're gonna build. They, they throw a lot of stuff out that, and then when I, he says, tell, uh, 'cause it was just before my meeting with Michelle and he says, tell her all this and she'll know what to do. And when I talked to Michelle, she was like, I don't really know. It, it will be a process regardless. So whether, we're hoping, we're trying to get signed up to get that other building under construction by the spring, but I don't, this kind of morphs into the highway. I don't, this kind of morphs into the highway, I haven't seen the highway culvert being, anything happening there, so that could, uh, I don't know, I've called the state, because we have to start in the spring, I've done, we're trying to control our costs right now, we're seeing six and seven percent increase in construction costs, interest rates, we're trying to get this locked down now, um, and we'll have to own up to whatever happens with the price on town meeting day, because we're just, that's where we're at, if we, if we don't get moving, we won't, we'll lose all next summer. Which, again, the costs just keep going up, so, I don't know, I might have to, I mean, I don't know, whatever the state, they're gonna wait till spring, they may have to withdraw our permission to use our property, because I can't keep inevitably, they claim they're gonna give us some money for the delay, but at some point, it's not gonna be a hundred thousand, it's gonna be two hundred thou, you know what I'm saying, it's just, I can't just, and, and, because no contractor's gonna sign with us and say, I'm starting in May, saying, if they, state highway people, we don't know what they're gonna do, so that's my harbor, and I've got
Yeah.
nineteen balls in the air. So the state, I don't know, you guys haven't heard anything on the state project I wrote in?
I've heard the, about a week ago, I had an email with Adam Doudro, and he said, still talking, or late October, November, yeah, right.
But they're really screwing us up, cause I had a contractor ready to go do our bank stabilization October first, and I could have had it done. So I'm not real happy, I mean, I, the state's never been great neighbors with this type of thing, in my view, and I told them that, and here we are again, it's just, we're just stuck, so
They couldn't fit that building onto our little park, could they? Three thousand square, I have no idea how much.
Well, the problem, the problem is, it's like you found out with the gazebo, um, I have an architect, I have a structural engineer, I have a civil engineer, I have thirteen permits, I just got the last permit for the building, which cost eleven thousand dollars.
Ooh, God.
All fundraised money, we haven't spent any tax money yet, we've done this all, all our permitting's been paid for, all the design's been paid for, we donated funds, so that's why I, like, that's why I just smirk, because if I, if, even if we were to put an addition on our new building, okay, just let that float around, um, getting the permits to do it, you'd have to have a new highway access, you'd have to revisit your wastewater, you'd have to revisit, we're already revisiting our wastewater, I've got a couple, three grand in design issues with engineers already, because of the highway project, and I'm concerned we're not gonna recover that, right, you see, we're all, so we're just hunting, I guess, best work.
How long are those permits good for, is it just a year?
Most of them, yeah, within a year, a lot, we used to go over and work a little bit, you're fine, and the fire safety was the one I delayed the longest on, cause it's the most expensive, and it has a one year, but you can go over there and cut a tree down, and I, I worked on the project.
Oh, I know.
I'll bring my tractor over and move some dirt, you worked on it, right, that's what work is, we're just slow, we're doing it by hand.
So I don't see the, the electric department coming to move that bank or anything.
Yeah, cause they're supposed to cut the bank back, there's one more wire to move, there's phone wires to move, there's
So they're waiting for the, somebody to pull the trigger.
Yeah, so I need the stream elevation, for my engineer to design our catch basin, it's gotta go across there when they do their, it's like, they're just trying to share what's, I mean, I must have nine balls in the air, that I just don't know what's gonna happen right now.
Can't wait to braid up
And our building, which was really insufficient before, is like super hard to work out at now, because we've got it, we're gonna try to get it taped up, and both buildings right now are very inefficient to run any heat in, but I've, I've got the heat on, because I, um, I do have a contractor that's gonna scrape some people off in the next few weeks to insulate for us and strap it. Then we have to wait until we resolve, I don't wanna pour money into that building, if they end up buying it out, we could have used on the newer project. Cause obviously, we're making some pretty significant cuts over there, because the cost increases. That's just where we're at, to see how much less hair I have. You have way too much hair to have that much.
Well, thank you for that pleasant update.
I sent you, and I'll, what I'll do is, if you want to put me on again for the second meeting, I can usually make these, and I'll just send you, if anything changes, and when I hear from Adam again, hopefully they get it done this year, cause I really wanna see that happen.
Really?
And them digging part of that bank out is beneficial to us. I just can't see us waiting to an unknown date, you, you're not gonna sign a contract to start in May, and you don't know if you're gonna start in May.
Really?
Cause if we can get it signed, they can start purchasing materials before costs go up, and we'll have stuff early in the spring, but that's where we're at.
Well, thank you for taking care of all those million details.
I never imagined it would be as difficult, I knew it was gonna be difficult, but like, it has level, like, expert difficult now. Cause the, the, the state had to stick their nose in after they made a flood, and then the state sticks their nose in, so makes it really hard. I'll keep informed.
Thank you. Shall we move along to the recovery officers' report?
Yeah, I have a question. Where did you come up with that title, recovery officer?
I think Norman suggested that.
Oh, Norman.
Cause I was calling, I was calling you the FEMA czar, and I guess you didn't think that was appropriate.
FEMA point of contact would have been fine.
You should have a badge though, I think.
You can get a jacket.
Go ahead.
And a hard hat, with a gopher on it.
I need the hard hat, work with these guys. So, we had a meeting last
I'm off, you guys all stay.
Thank you.
Call me if you need.
Thank you, Paul.
Call me, I'll see you.
It won't be tomorrow, I gotta work tomorrow.
It won't be, I won't be.
Okay, you're
So we had a meeting last Tuesday with FEMA, it was a conference call, FEMA couldn't be there on site, so anyhow, uh, I sent them a list of seven questions, and the first question, was there an update from the original site inspection that, that happened on September seventh, twenty twenty-three? A gentleman named Lenny Havill went out and visited three sites, and when I asked our FEMA point of contact, she said, go to the grants portal, which I had up on my computer, and there was no report, so I said to our, uh, FEMA contact, okay, where is it, and she didn't know, so she couldn't find it either, so at least we were both on the same page. And so we knew there was going to be a site inspection, or there's gonna be a site inspection, uh, or she wanted to send a site inspector out for this week, and I said, okay, uh, when can you send that person, and she said, any day, anytime. And she had yelled over to a colleague like I had alluded to before, and so, sent her an email almost immediately saying that there'll be a site inspection, nine o'clock today, and here's Alfie's, our, our road commissioner, sees his contact information, you know, run it through him, how to meet, how to get out there, didn't happen. So I called her today, and I said, you know, pretty disappointing in the fact that it didn't happen again, and we still don't have the site inspections from September seventh. So we have a meeting tomorrow, and that'll be high on the agenda list, so what's going on? So damage inventory forms, these are the forms that are key, and in which you have sixty days from your project scoping meeting, to put them on their grants portal. So, I had put up, as, as like a test, two damage inventories, one for Blake Hill Road, and one for Wilbur Road, which we had completed a hundred percent. So the grants portal that I'm using is the same grants portal that she uses. And with that, I can see our damage inventories on the grants portal, she cannot. So she said, send them to me, and then she'll post them on the grants forum, I said, okay, that's fine. And, you know, I'll make a, a note when they were sent, because we wanna be sure within, we're in that sixty day timeframe. So I sent them to her, she couldn't post them. She said, uh, I can't post them, would you do it? And it was like, oh, so
Is it the formatting, or?
Well, I don't know. You know, you know, I like to think that I'm pretty computer savvy, and I get on these portals and follow instructions, and I even went online and got a YouTube video on how to do this, and I'm doing everything correctly, and our forms are getting posted, so right here, we have four damage inventories on the portal for a total amount of forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars, and she can't see them, for whatever reason, so we're gonna talk about that tomorrow. And, so it was funny, she directed me to, we have a FEMA program application guide, that's like four hundred pages long, and she said, skip, go to page two eighty-three, it'll tell you how to do it. Okay, so anyhow, we're having issues with she not being able to see our damage inventory, even, inventories, even though they are posted. Rest assured, they are posted, they're entitled damage inventories. And so, when we started talking about, what was the next one? So how do we begin to complete forms, and there are several forms, right after you do a damage inventory. There's a forced labor summary, there's a forced account equipment summary, there's a project worksheet, there's also a form for leased equipment. So any of the leased equipment that the town utilizes, like there's two large excavators, will be able to, you know, claw back from FEMA the cost of those. You know, up to, what, seventy-five percent from FEMA, and then additional twenty percent, I believe, from the state, so we'll be able to recoup ninety-five percent of that. So, uh, I can't do anything on those until she assigns a project. So if she can't find the damage inventories, she can assign a project.
Right, I love.
So what she'll do, which is good, cause it'll cut down on paperwork that I have to do, is she'll lump these damage inventories together into one project. So instead of having like thirty different projects, we may have fifteen, which will make my life a little bit easier, hopefully. And we talked about the town offices, and about the insurance claim that, uh, Robin had just received, and we talked about that, and she said, send me all that information, and she'll take a look at it, and with that, she'll may be able to, uh, she will be able to, if you have to pay any deductibles, get that money back, and I noticed there was some depreciation in the insurance form too, so it was about three thousand dollars worth of depreciation, she may be able to get that back. And so I sent that to her, sent all the information I have, and a damage inventory for the town offices, so she has all that information. And what other notes, so we talked about class four roads too.
Oh.
Because, uh, she said, unless you can demonstrate that you have a class four road policy, we won't be able to recoup any money.
What?
That's their, well, that's their policy. So, looking into the orange book, I said, well, in the orange book, there is a passage on class four roads, and it's in section thirteen, parts one, two, and three. And I sent her the orange book, highlighted the passages, and from our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, I got a line item for class four road maintenance. So, I believe in that section thirteen, it said, class four roads would be maintained at the discretion of the town. So with that information from the orange book, and with the line item in the budget, we've demonstrated that we do maintain class four roads. So any work we do on class four roads, excuse me, like Old Quarry Road, or Town Highway twenty-four, which is, I believe, Carol Ray's place, and we have another class four road, Town Highway twenty-three, which there is
Dan Jarnes's, probably?
Yeah. That's actually class three, I think.
Yeah, that's right, you're right, yeah, but then there was a while to work up on
Yeah, maybe I misspoke, maybe it's not
Nichols Pond.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three or twenty-four.
Yeah, Nichols Pond Road, yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, that's class four, where they fixed up the road up there.
Right, right, so we quantified that, that cost as well, so there'll be another damage inventory though.
And, and state statute, you know, any class four road, the town is responsible for any culverts, bridges, and at this point in time, erosion too, Ben.
The similar Hydrological, connected.
So you think that she'll be happy with that? I, I looked at that, you sent that around, and that orange book, it has a table of contents with no page numbers, so that's a real pain in the butt.
Well, it has section
I know, it's just gotta go through and through.
It took me like a minute to figure that out.
Yeah, you have to keep going through, but, but that's good that you sent it to her and highlighted.
Ten, eleven-four, thirteen-two, thirteen-eleven, thirteen-twelve, and on page twenty-eight. So I sent her all that, and the line item in the town budget.
And we can go back to other years to have the same line item, if she's, if she asks.
She, well, yeah, if she wants that historic information, you can certainly send that to her. So what else, what else did I send her? Damage inventories, to date, we have five damage inventories up on their portal. For Wilbur Road, town office damage, Town Highway twenty-four, which I believe is Carol Ray's bridge, radar speed control sign, and Blake Hill Road. Those five entries total forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. So, what we'll do
And that includes the labor?
That includes material, labor, and equipment usage.
Oh, okay.
What I'll upload tomorrow is Foster Hill Road, it's ready to upload, Tebets Hill Road. And that's the only two that are ready to upload. Tomorrow, we'll be completing, hopefully, Cabot Road, Chardia Hill Road, County Road, Dock Pond Road, East Hill Road, Kate Brook Road, King Pond Road, Nichols Pond Road, I think that might be done, class four, Michael, yeah. Yeah, so, we have ten road, class three roads left to do, the park, the estimate for the park, which, thank you, we got that from Russell, and I'll do a damage inventory sheet for that tomorrow.
And Brady's gonna get you that, uh, bill from the guy who did the northern section of the park, DNR.
The rail trail, I'll need an estimate, that's gonna be huge.
That deadline is really fast approaching, right?
I'm sorry?
The deadline for that is, when is it, the first, November first, November twelfth?
It's due, they're due November sixth.
November sixth, okay.
So, again, you know, it's, it's, damage inventories are like placeholders, if you don't have, like, some of the, some of these roads, the work has been completed on, so what you do is you capture the emergency work, how to temporary work, how to get them passable, and then the final work. So, where this rail trail, you know, is probably gonna be all temporary, unless
Alfie was saying, what they're doing is gonna be permanent, and so can we, like, we'll have the costs, since they're starting the work tomorrow, we'll know really what the costs were.
In another week, you should have a pretty good idea.
So
Well, that's the key, a pretty good idea, you know, a pretty good idea is different from having the final figures.
Yeah.
You know, so, as long as I get an estimate, you know, you can always go back and revisit these documents.
Who will you want an estimate from for that, so our road crew's doing the work?
From our road crew, and I'll be
Got it.
Like I said, I was gonna zip tie him to the chair tomorrow. Because I wanna, my, my goal is to get damage inventories, as many as possible, up onto the portal somewhere by Friday. You know, so we're not scrambling around next week, uh, you know, scrambling around, I don't wanna do that, that'd drive me crazy.
Can I ask a question? Does anybody know who owns the little footbridge down here? That goes from the post office over through to the state and rake?
I tried to find that out a couple of years ago, Ron.
Because that got hammered in that flood too.
Yeah, the boards were starting to rot, and there was, somebody did fix one board.
And somebody looked down under, and it looks like it's come off the foundation a little bit, so
Sure, probably has, with the flooding, yeah. Yeah, I don't know
Is that a snowmobile bridge?
No, 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 it's a, the little footbridge right by the rake that goes towards the post office. I don't know who, it's been there for a long time, I don't
That looks like the lady's auxiliary, cause that's who owns the land, right? Yeah, I have no idea.
Another subject, Norman was here to, to hear you talk about this potential
School, yeah, I noticed it wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, I thought it was. Oh, sorry.
I, yeah, I mean, I can, let's skip
Oh, never mind, no, not
Why don't we save it for the next meeting?
Yeah, cause Norman wanted to talk about that, and that's
And I did print out some copies of the lease, I could leave them
Oh, great.
I'll leave them here.
Okay.
Does it ever check knock?
It doesn't have anything about I'm sorry, I didn't mean to
Sorry for the interruption.
I'm starting to fall asleep.
So, yeah, I will
So, yeah, I will, um, there's some copies of the lease, and, oh, actually, I'm gonna leave them to you, Robin, and.
Sure.
And I can, I could also email this.
Okay.
But, and the lease really isn't germane to the question, but, but it does give everybody a sense of the agreement that we have.
Could we see those, are those for us, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I have one from another discussion about it, so I'll go on.
Thank you.
So I also, she had asked for any timesheets, so I uploaded the timesheets for debris removal at the town office. So those are categorized as, uh, category A, because it's volunteer work for debris removal. And I also uploaded my time, which is category Z, which is more administrative. And they're both at an hourly rate of twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents an hour. So that's a total of seventeen hundred dollars for debris removal at the town offices, and my, so far, twenty-nine hundred dollars for, for what I've done.
And where does Danielle fit in?
In terms of.
In the same category? Of administrative costs?
Yeah, she's scheduled Z, which is administrative, so we'll be able to get back from FEMA twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents of her consulting fee, which is a little bit greater than that, but well worth it.
Good.
Really well worth it.
I'm glad.
Yeah, she's jumped right in, and she'll be good. So, that's about it, but I have one more thing. So this project is taking a lot more of my time than I thought it would, you know, initially, I thought just, you know, skimming over the documents required, I didn't think it would get to this point where I'm spending, like, in September, I had forty-four hours worth of work, and so far in October, I have twenty-eight, and I have a meeting tomorrow, and you know, getting those damage inventories out, I'll probably have over forty hours for the month of October. So what I'd like the select board to consider is that I start being reimbursed going forward, instead of doing my work pro bono, and that I would be reimbursed at the rate of twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents an hour, which is the FEMA rate. So there would be no harm done to the town budget or the taxpayers, that these monies would come directly from FEMA, or actually through the state, and then to the town. So just offering that as a consideration for the select board.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it's totally good.
You wanna make another motion?
I will make a motion, but I have a question first. It also seems fair, it's possible to maybe even consider going retroactive?
I was thinking that, too, no?
Okay.
Because I said, I said I was gonna do a pro bono, and then, you know, I can see.
Ridiculous.
Well, no, because I don't mind volunteering, that's the thing. But I can see that with these other documents that are required, it's, it's gonna take a lot more effort. Unfortunately, Danielle is there, and, you know, she keeps me in line, which is good.
You said twenty-eight what?
Twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
Fourteen?
A princely sum.
So I will make a motion to start paying Skip twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents an hour going forward, starting now, or starting the first, like, starting today?
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Well worth it.
Thanks. Yeah, so we have a meeting tomorrow, which will prove interesting.
Another phone meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Not coming in person anymore?
Not to Woodbury. She was going to Tunbridge last week, and we got off our meeting at, our meeting started at nine, she had to be in Tunbridge at eleven-thirty, and it was ten-thirty, and she was still in Williston.
Williston, wow.
I said, "Well, good luck."
Yeah, really.
So that's all I have, any questions?
When I'm going through, when I'm writing the minutes and I have to watch this all on TV, when I get to your section, it gets really short. I get tired. It's so complicated.
Being concise is good.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, nothing from the emergency management director? John, did you have anything, or did you just wanna have an evening out?
Well, I've got my wife at home cleaning up camp.
Yeah.
So we can shut it down.
Yeah.
So this gave me something to do, stay out of her way. I'll reconsider it next time.
Well, I hope you'll give her a full report, a wonderful time. Right. So, um, do we need an executive section?
I feel like we could skip it, do you think we could skip it?
Yeah, let's skip it, we're not gonna have an executive section.
We're only two of us, we're missing our hairbrush, get here.
Yeah, okay. So, um, motion to adjourn?
A second?
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.